I'd like to call the August 2016 meeting of the Board of Education to order. First item, implication. Ms. Heathridge?
Good evening. 'Twas the night before school started. It was the night before school started when all through the town, the parents were cheering. It was a riotous sound. About eight kids were washed and tucked into bed when memories of homework filled them with dread. New pencils, new folders, new notebooks too, new teachers, new friends. Their anxiety grew. The parents just giggled when they learned of this fright and shouted upstairs, "Go to bed, it's a school night." Wish you all the best with going back to school this fall and just really glad to be associated with Currituck County Schools and again, I wish you the best.
Thank you. Sidney, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Joe, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Next item, work session review. Earlier today, we had a work session. During that work session, we received a budget update from Lori Trussell, our finance officer. We heard a discussion on a driver's education waiver from Virginia Arrington, our Director of Secondary Education. A review of what happened during summer reading camp this year from Sandy Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent, and Carrie Chappell. Next, we heard some information on school nutrition meal charges and it seems like there's been quite a few people, you know, charging meals here and how much it's costing the board and we're looking at different options to try to reduce that amount. Then we heard the first reading of revision to Policy 9030, Facility Construction, which had to do with sizes of change orders, who had to approve them and who could approve the small ones and I think 50,000 was the cutoff.
Correct.
Then we heard a discussion on leave policy and that was, leave policy, the concerned employees, who could take leave when students are in session. Then, the State Board of Education, was it Sunday? When did they pass that?
I think it was August the 4th.
August the 4th, okay. They passed a policy where sixth graders could participate in interscholastic activities and so the Board has decided to use this coming school year as a look see for interscholastic athletics for sixth grades, sixth graders. Next, student board member reports. Sidney and Jacob?
Good evening, everybody. I'm very excited, testing. I'm going to be covered Central, Currituck High, Currituck Middle, Griggs Elementary, and Shawboro Elementary. For Central Elementary, everybody at Central Elementary School is looking forward to the new school year. We want to invite our pre-K parents to attend an orientation meeting on August 19th at 10:00 a.m. Also, all of our students and families are invited to attend Central's open house on August 25th from 4 to 6:00. We are looking forward to a great new school year and seeing everyone soon. Currituck County High School, we are so excited for the 2016 to 17 school year. Fall sports are already in full swing and our first football scrimmage takes place this Friday night at CCHS. Please check our athletic events calendar for a full listing of dates and times for our athletic events. Freshman orientation will take place on August 25th from 8:30 to 12:30. All incoming freshmen will receive an Alert Now message with all of the details. Over 71 students are registered for the dual enrollment courses through COA. These students are taking a total of 161 college courses with the potential to earn 459 credit hours. Open house for all students will take place on September 8th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. For Currituck County Middle, their open house is August 25th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. From Griggs Elementary, welcome back. We are very excited to kick off another great school year. Pre-K orientation for parents will be held on August 19th at 1:00 p.m. Pre-K is new to Griggs this year and we are very excited for them to join our school. Open house will be held on Thursday, August 25th from 4 to 6:00. We hope to see all of our parents and students there. Good luck to all on the 2016 to 17 school year. And lastly, from Shawboro Elementary, their open house is August 26th from 12:30 to 3:00 p.m. Thank you.
All right. I'll be covering JP NAP Early College, Jarvisburg Elementary, Knott's Island Elementary, Moayak Elementary, and Moayak Middle. So JP NAP Early College is once again open for business with 297 students enrolled, which is the largest student population in their history. Their students return to campus on Monday of this week and our opening convocation ceremony, attended by Ms. Dawn Kraft, district administrators, and parents was a great kickoff to our year. Staff members, the class of 2017, and this year's fifth-year super seniors were all recognized. Already, underclassmen photographs were taken today, Wednesday. Friday, August 12th, will be a big day at NAP Early College with senior portraits and the orientation trip for our students attending classes at COA in Elizabeth City and the Regional Aviation and Technology Training Center, or for short, the Maple Campus. Classes at COA will begin next Monday, August 15th. A new addition this fall for our students at the Ratsi Campus will be the recently opened biology classroom and lab. The JP NAP open house will be held on Thursday, August 18th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Finally, Monday, August 22nd, will be an early release day for our students. For Jarvisburg Elementary, the Jarvisburg Jags are ready to begin a new school year. Their open house will be Thursday, August 25th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. and they look forward to seeing everyone there. For Knott's Island Elementary, they're ready to begin a great year. Open house is on August 25th. Grades kindergarten to second have open house from 6:00 to 6:30 and grades three through five from 6:30 to seven. They look forward to seeing all of their students and parents. Moayak Elementary is excited to start the 2016-2017 school year. Their open house will be held on August 26th from 12:30 to 1:30 for kindergarten and from 1:30 to 3:00 for first through fifth grade. They can't wait to see everyone and they say it's going to be a paucem year. For Moayak Middle, their open house will be Thursday, August 25th from 3:00 to 6:00 and that's all I have, so back to the Board.
Thank you. Before we go on to the next item, I would just like to add, for those of you that would be interested in going to the football scrimmage this Friday, it's going to be at 6 o'clock on Friday. And I stopped down there today and we have probably one of the most beautiful football fields in the state.
Aye.
And soccer field also, so. Anyway, next item, approval of the junior student board members. And I will say, we interviewed three from the high school and three from NAP Early College and the Board agreed that, what a difficult decision, but what a great decision that we had three quality people from each school, but it made it really tough to select one. Now I'd like to put in front of the Board the selections for the junior student board members. First, from CCHS, Jenna Akers, and from NAP Early College, Tyler Little. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We look forward to having Jenna and Tyler with us at the next meeting. Next item, K-5 math materials implementation. Sandy Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent, and she brought a couple of teachers with her.
And I did. Ripped them away from their summer so I can get them in here and help me with this. Wouldn't be the first time because they've been very involved with this process that we're going to share with you this evening. And I just lost my display. Can you jiggle it or something? There you go. We're back in. Back in business. Good evening, Dr. Donnie, members of the Board.
Superintendent Stefanik. This evening, I'd like to share some information with you regarding some math materials implementation that will be taking place this school year. If you change nothing, nothing will change. That quote has been the centerpiece of a lot of discussion held with our administrative team, down to our teacher curriculum revision teams that have met throughout the summertime. Again, I ripped them away a couple of times. And it really has helped us to be able to embrace what we're going to need to do in order to make a difference and change some of the outcomes that we've been seeing across the district, especially-
Especially in some of our state assessments. So over the past few years, the district, our district as well as others across the state have really struggled in our efforts to try to meet the rigorous math standards specifically that were adopted by the state of North Carolina. Teachers have worked tirelessly and they've unpacked the standards to try to understand them better. They have designed lessons that we felt like were aligned with those standards and they've just worked really hard to try to make an impact on what the students learn in math, beginning at the very early ages. Unfortunately, we haven't always seen the benefits of their toil and so what we're going to share with you tonight is really our compelling why. And again, our plan for changing something in order to be able to see a change in results as well. Okay, could you jiggle me again? Thank you. Yes. All right, on this chart, you'll see three years' worth of data for third, fourth, and fifth grade. And just to give you a little orientation on this, the pink represents the district level combined third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade proficiency rates for our state EOG exam results. Underneath, in the white, you'll see a range. This reflects the proficiency rates for each of our elementary schools. So rather than give you each of the six schools for each of those three years, I'm showing you the range. So for example, in 2013-14, our third graders across the district, we were 65.7% proficient. We had a range of proficiency ratings at schools that started at 30% proficient and went as high as 75. So you can kind of see the pattern that goes across as you look at each of the year's data. When you consider what does this mean in context, our goal is a minimum of 80% proficient in order to be able to tell that we're providing effective core instruction, core meaning that regular instruction that everybody gets along with some differentiation. So it doesn't include providing support at Tier Two where kids might go out for Title I support or even in the EC classroom. We want to see core instruction for all of our students at or above 80%. So with that being the goal, you can see that we're falling very short of that mark based on the last three years. This is a compelling why we need to do something different. Overall, again, just to reiterate, but the proficiency at the district and most of our schools is well below that acceptable level. So what we're seeing within those ranges is we've got inconsistent performance, not only, you know, across years, but we're looking from grade to grade, third, fourth, fifth, to school to school, wide ranges of inconsistency, as well as from teacher to teacher, when we get to that level, we have a wide range of proficiency. That indicates to us that, you know, we're out there, we don't have any glue that holds us all together. Teachers are working really hard, but we don't have a standardized set of materials that will allow our teachers to work towards one goal. They're pulling things and using what they have and obviously, we're getting some good results and some not so great results. So this is why we need to change. At the end of last school year, not this past year, the end of the 14-15 school year, I met with a group of teachers that were willing to come in on one of their workdays and discuss math results. During that meeting, I shared with them some materials that were readily available. They're posted on the website, open source, and they were directed to me, to my attention, by our math consultant. Said that they were very well aligned with the standards that North Carolina had adopted and there may be some variance, but they were very extensive in lesson plans and resources. So I shared them with the group of teachers and I said, you know, here are some resources. Let's, you know, give them a shot, give them something to work from that brought us together. Within probably 10 minutes of sharing that information with the group of teachers, multiple teachers in that group said, why can't we just implement them from start to finish? Sure. I said, we could try that out. I didn't want everybody to have to do that the first year because they are very detailed and I knew that it was going to be different for teachers. So with a group of willing participants, I gave them the materials, all of the modules were provided, and they started the implementation this school year. We had teachers from second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade involved in this pilot. At the end of the year, we had many more teachers that were using them as resources but didn't feel like they were ready to implement it fully. So we monitored the progress. We used our early release days, our professional development full days, and we brought them in and we met, how's it going? You know, are you, what kind of support do you need? And we were troubleshooting as we went along. One group of teachers, the second grade group, actually began their own support group and they met once a month and they brought, they came together to say, okay, where are you? What does this mean? Have you had any trouble with this? And this has worked really well. So they really formed their own support group. And we saw a tremendous amount of success based on their support from each other and you'll see later on, as I shared what we're planning for this year, that we've incorporated that into our plan for the coming school year. So again, looking at the results of the pilot, trying to mirror that earlier compelling why, what are the quantitative results based on EOGs? Third grade, we had five teachers. Incidentally, they were all on the same team at the same school. Their results for proficiency when combined as a cohort were 82.7% compared to the district's 75.2, which also includes their results, okay? The range was 73.9% proficient to 100% proficient. Now, I'm not going to lie to you that these teachers, this was not the only thing they changed. They worked collaboratively, they shared their students, they implemented a lot of differentiated activities, included an online pathway that allowed the kids to be able to progress at their own pace called ScoopPad, which was district provided. So there were a lot of things that went on that got these kinds of results for that team. Fourth grade, we had four teachers that were in the pilot group and again, their results, 72.8%, not still meeting that 80% that we would have liked, but first year implementation compared to 57.6% at the district. Fifth grade, we had three teachers in that group that fully implemented, fully implemented, and their results were at 68.4% compared to 59%. So compelling why is that the teachers that really went through the materials and did it with fidelity saw some results. So this is one of the reasons why we wanted to move forward with implementing the materials that were available to them. So I can talk numbers and, but the true story comes from a couple of the teachers that actually went through and lived it and I'd like for the Board and the public to be able to hear from them. Ms. Angela Ferris is a fifth grade teacher at Moayak Elementary School and again, she worked with me on two projects this summer on curriculum revisions in two different subject areas, so she's a go-to girl. And then Helen Taylor, who's a third grade teacher at Shawboro Elementary School. So I'd like for them to come up and share their insight and experience with you.
Thank you for having us on this lovely summer night. I was one of the five third grade teachers at Shawboro Elementary who piloted this Engage New York program along with my other PLC members. We found the program to be very effective and engaging for our students. As I worked through it, I saw the benefits of if I was a brand-new teacher coming in, having something to go by, as well as being a veteran teacher, this will be my eighth year coming up, being able to take my own spin on it, but be able to use it for the needs of my students. I found that the pacing and the alignment made sense to me as a teacher. It also made sense to my kids as we worked through it. It allowed my students to build upon their foundational skills in the area of math, to make connections between the concepts. It wasn't, okay, we're done with fractions, we're moving on. They started to make those connections as we moved through the different areas and they developed a deeper understanding of the math concept. It wasn't just that basic level. They started problem-solving on their own and getting creative with the math concepts. It provided time for them to build upon their math fluency. It's spiral reviewed throughout the year, so it wasn't a, we're done in September, October with the topic and we're not revisiting it. We were revisiting the topics all throughout the year, which made a big difference in the end for them. There was interactive learning going on. I was able to differentiate throughout the year based off the needs of my students with this program. We also found another great online resource outside of just ScoopPad, there's a resource called Zern, which aligns directly with the Engage New York models that is interactive for the students to go on. They can do it at home, they can do it in the classroom, and they really liked that. They could work at their own pace, gave me an idea of how they were doing as well. So for both myself and my students, I felt that this program was very successful and we were confident in the end at what we accomplished in the math results they showed in my EOG scores. I had over 94% proficiency at the end in my class, so I felt like it was a great program.
Now, you were one of five teachers at Shawboro that did this?
Yes, sir.
How often did you get to meet with the other teachers and talk about what was going on?
We met once a week.
Once a week?
At our daily PLC, yeah, at a weekly PLC meeting and we discussed what was working, what we needed to change. We brought in some other resources. I think as we move into this upcoming school year, it will be easier because we've worked through some of the kinks and can provide support to other teachers that are going to implement it this school year. We also found that while we were staying similar to each other, some of us may be a lesson ahead or a lesson behind, so we could give tips to each other and kind of be a support system for each other at Shawboro, so.
So this Engage, is it Engage New York?
Engage New York, yes, sir.
That provided pacing guides for the whole year?
Yeah, it was completely paced out. It's in modules, I think there were seven modules that we went through and it stepped through every lesson of what needed to be done, what you needed to prepare yourself for, what materials you needed. So it was a great resource to have.
And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, y'all are like on the same crossways on the halls, so did that help you too as far as being so, so close together?
We changed our classrooms this past year into pods so that we were across from each other, diagonal from each other. So we were right there and that helped too and we also would send kids over and do stuff during enrichment to kind of build things. We found some online programs to help, so.
Worked out well.
Thank you.
My experience was just a little bit different because I was the only, I teach fifth grade and I was the only fifth grade in my team that chose to participate, so I do find that it would be a lot more helpful if your entire team did it because you could bounce things off of each other. But having said that, it was also my second year teaching fifth grade, so I really enjoyed this program because it's scripted, but yet within each module, you have different activities so you're free to kind of set up your lesson the way you need to, but it provided a great mapping of what I needed to do. So being new to fifth grade, it was a great experience because my first year, I kind of just dug through things and put things together. So this was much more mapped out for me and it aligned a lot better with the seniors. So for me, it was a great help. So again, just like her, it provides the fluency, the kids loved doing the math. I saw that was the greatest joy for me is they wanted to, when's math? Can I do math? So that was wonderful for me. My results were pretty good. I didn't get quite as high as 95, but I got to 75 and I was very proud of that because in the fifth grade curriculum, you know, it builds on itself, so some of the things I had to go back and kind of catch up the fourth grade stuff that they missed. So in the end, I was pretty proud of all of them. So for me, it was a positive experience.
Angela, were there two other fifth grade teachers in the district that piloted this?
There were and-
Were you allowed, did you get to interact with them?
We did. We did, what was it, collaboration? Like during our plannings and stuff, it was like three or four times a year. So that was very helpful and we shared as much as we could and I learned a lot from them when I was with them. So yeah, the collaboration is everything, I think.
Oh, good. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And she's being very modest because Ms. Ferris's results had more fives this year than she had in previous years too. Am I right? Yes, okay, yes. A level five is the highest you can get on your test scores. So again, I think there's more things that we can do here. So just to reiterate, we are going to be moving forward based on not just the quantitative, but really the results that the teachers saw and what their views were in terms of what they saw going on in the classroom. I think that was probably more of a selling point to me than seeing that we could get results. So anyway, we're working towards the district-wide implementation of the Engage New York materials. This was, just so everybody's clear, it was designed by the state of New York based on standards that were adopted during our Race to the Top era. They invested in creating these materials and worked collaboratively with Eureka Math, which is a math program, math textbook. So that's how all of these things kind of came together. So when we go through there and we've made the decision to do this, I emailed the staff because again, based on their feedback, my team told me they need to be looking at these materials that will help them prepare for implementing. So we shared that information out with them and hopefully, they're ready when they come back. On the convocation workday, we have a three, now three-hour session devoted to bringing the teachers in, sharing with them why we're doing this, giving a panel discussion so that they can talk with the teachers, much like you did tonight, and be able to then use a good chunk of time delving into that first module. If we give them all of the materials, it looks like this, so we're going to break it up in chunks and we're going to go over the first module together with their team district-wide so they can form those relationships and be able to collaborate as they go through the rest of the year. So then we'll be looking at modules one and two. We will have virtual support for them and it'll be optional, but we will make ourselves available so teachers can talk with one another virtually. And then we will use that early release team time so that they can meet not only at their schools, but then when we have the PD days, we're also going to work in time. So again, we can kind of support along the way in the small chunks. So important for you and for the public, expect to see different, okay? The sequence and the pacing is different than what we've done. Teachers were amazed. They're integrated modules. We've got things that are not standalone anymore. In other words, measurement. We typically, we typically will put in measuring inches, centimeters into a unit at the end of our pacing guide because, well, we'll get to it, right? No, it's up front because it's based on base 10. So we're teaching measurement as an activity that helps conceptualize base 10. So that's going to be something. And the girls mentioned earlier about the spiral review. It's throughout the whole program. The strategies that are in here, and it's important that you understand that these are strategies. They have some funny names like aeromath and you might hear that, but it is a strategy to help students to be able to decompose, visualize math, and conceptualize the math rather than just memorize the math. So we don't stick on the strategies because there's fluency and there's still an expectation that we get to that mental math. Terms in the math are, in the math program may seem different. We talk number bonds rather than number families, you know? We'll use 10 frames to illustrate the basic 10 units. So those are some of the terms that might come out that seem a little strange. Quite honestly, I used 10 frames when I was teaching in my first and second grade class many, many years ago, so it's not a new idea. And it's going to focus a lot on mathematical- And it's going to focus a lot on mathematical practices and developing that deeper understanding of the concepts, so that later on, it becomes more automatic, and we have a really good, strong foundation for what comes down in the high school and the middle school. So with that, I will take any questions you want.
Do we have plans at all to send or to inform the parents? Example, I'm sitting here, I'm listening, I'm one a parent, but I'm also a board member, so obviously, I get to experience some of this and hear more about it than most parents. Do we have plans as far as either open houses, talking to the parents about what's going on, giving them some instructional sheets, that kind of thing? Because that's one of the main things I hear from parents from time to time, especially with new math. Math has changed dramatically in the last few years. Parents are confused, and they're trying to help their kids, and, you know, I just want to know if, if we haven't thought about a plan, do we have one?
No, we have, and the teachers in the pilot group discussed the homework piece a lot. Again, because it's kind of different and it's new, we want to make sure that whatever we send home with our kids, that they're capable of doing for practice on their own. And so if parents can't assist them, there are videos that some teachers use to help, you know, parents to understand how it works, and so those will be utilized. But we're going to try to work within what the kids can do and what parents can help with, until we kind of feel like the kids have this under their belt, before we send anything home. But to address the communication piece, absolutely. It does need to be, and we will be discussing that with all of our teachers, to make sure that it's part of their open house agenda. But not only that, but incorporating it into their family, you know, we have family reading nights and other family nights at school. So having that family math night where we can actually explain, what does that look like? And, you know, give them some examples of what they can expect, so they can have an understanding. So absolutely.
Great.
It's not, it's not on paper yet, but yes, that's all part of what we'll talk with them at the convocation.
No, I think that's, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sandy, my question is, we hear it all the time, see it on news, see it on the internet, Common Core math. It's new. It's, please tell me, we're not going in that direction?
Well, the standards that are adopted by North Carolina were based on Common Core state standards, and they have been a part of our curriculum since 2012, I believe. Just recently, over this summertime, the state board has adopted revisions to, starting at Math 1, 2, and 3, and they have revised some of those standards, clarifying things and reorganizing the standards being covered in those courses. Teachers were a part of the review and the process to adopt or revise, and teachers felt like this is a more rigorous standard. So that'll trickle back. This year, the state will be looking at revisions to K-8, and so those standards will be looked at carefully with a team of teachers, and they will be moving forward with any revisions starting next school year, which is why we're going to go forward with this right now.
I mean, what we've heard on Common Core, they're doing away with it, they're changing it, there's a committee working on it, but we don't see any changes coming. And that's what parents are really concerned about, is, because I mean, some of the Common Core minor math problems that, you know, you did, that took you thirty seconds, now take two pages of the paper to fill out. And I mean, somewhere between here and Raleigh, I just don't understand why they haven't done away with it.
Well, and you're right, Mr. Simmons, and that's exactly why I want you to know, that this is going to be different for parents, and you'll probably hear from some. And what used to take, we stressed a lot of rote memory, and what we're finding is, we found that for some kids that have the capacity for memory and get the number sense and the number concepts, they do well in math. But right now, with the higher math and the level of math that we're expecting of our students when they graduate, rote memory just isn't going to cut it. So we have to pause, go back, and help build a stronger foundation for all of our students, so that they understand it, and then it becomes more automatic. So what might take two pages to break out and solve, it's about conceptualizing. I'm going to take it back. It's about breaking down their thinking, making it visual for them, so then they can move to that level of automaticity and they can solve it. So it's going to take a little time, but scaffolding their learning and building their understanding is going to take a little bit of understanding on all of our parts, and understanding that that is a strategy, that's not the math, that's not the end result. Those are the standards.
Not shaking my head, yes, I'm just saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
These are the standards we have to work with, Mr. Simmons, and they've been adopted by the state.
I understand they're adopted by the state, but I mean, we have probably one of the best countries in the world. We don't, we're not broke, we don't need to fix everything. And when I have parents call me on Common Core math, and they show me the problem, and I'm going, I don't have a clue how to do this. And I'm sure we have some elementary school parents in here, who now we can't help our kids with elementary school math, because when they start putting off, what did the old guy say one time? When they started putting letters in the math class, we're in trouble. But I understand it's state-mandated, and we're doing the best we can do.
It is, and we're going to try to put the tools in the hands of our teachers that will make them more confident and be able to help them understand how to teach math differently, so they can bring the parents on board. But it's huge, absolutely.
And that's to show us that it's worked. I mean, it's proven that what you did.
Well, was Charbroe, did Charbroe pretty much, I think, like their first grade, their second grade, were there some teachers in each one of those grades?
I did not present any of the K-2 data, because it's, it's in a different format. And I, for the time, I was trying to.
Well, the only thing I'm saying about that is, I spoke with teachers a lot last year about that, and their comments were, yes, it takes longer, but our students understand where they're coming from with that, and we feel like that next year, it'll be easier and next year. I'm going to tell you that as a student in elementary school, I knew, I mean, I was able to do the math, I was able to do division, subtraction, that kind of stuff, but I had not a clue where I was borrowing that from, until I was.
Why does it work?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I appreciate you sharing that, because some of our gifted kids, they struggle with being able to explain, how do they get at that? Because they just know it, it just comes to them. So having them slow down and really kind of break down the thought process helps to build them up. And so that's, that's one of the benefits that I've seen from the adoption of the Core standards as part of the North Carolina standards that we're teaching. And again, I think it will, we still have years to go before we'll see the payoff, unfortunately, but I think we're moving in the right direction.
Don't they do many more word problems with higher-level thinking skills in that, in math curriculum these days?
Absolutely.
Well, and we have to explain why they did what they did. I was doing that before it was popular, if you will, because my kids knew, why did you do it? Well, why is it yes, why is it no? You're not going to get just yes or no, so.
Well, it's a window into their thinking, so then you can find out, you know, where did they go astray? I mean, maybe they, it was one, just one piece of it, but maybe it was the whole, you know, concept that they missed the boat on. So it does give us a window into their thinking.
Yep.
Bear with me. Send anybody to me, I will be glad to talk with them, and we can, we can schedule these kinds of meetings where teachers like these two fabulous ladies could come out and explain some of the activities that were embedded in some of the materials that they're teaching that might seem a little foreign to some of us old folks.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Ms. Kinsel, thank you very much, and also thank you to Angela Ferris and Helen Taylor for piloting this for us.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, next item, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Is that moved?
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, public comment session. Does anybody sign up? Okay, we'll go to the next item, information items. The next work session will be September 1st, 2016, at the Professional Learning Center, at JP NAP at four o'clock. Next board of education meeting will be September 1st, 6:30, right here. And the next item, board member comments. Ms. Heather Ridge?
Yeah, I would just like to thank those that did come out tonight. Thank you also to Sandy, Ms. Ferris, Helen Taylor, for your commitment to education. We really appreciate the, going the extra mile and taking away from your summer, and it shows that you really care about, about our students, and thanks again. I hope everybody had a wonderful summer, hope they were able to have some downtime and some R and R, and took advantage of the hot climate, and it's back to the, back to the daily grind, so to speak, and I wish you the best for your 2016, 17 school year.
Mr. Simmons?
Same thing, just welcome everybody back. It's hard to believe summer went by this quick. Schools starting, you know, back already. First off, fall sports is coming shortly. If you see the lights on, stop by and see what's going on at our schools. Next, field goal. We have a goal post on the practice field at the high school. For people who don't know, I was a field goal kicker in college and high school, and when I didn't see a goal post on our practice field, this was one of my pet peeves, and I have to thank Mr. Stefanics, took a lot of complaining, but there's a goal post out there for our kickers now to practice. They don't have to kick at a chain link fence. Thank you, Mr. Stefanics. Last but not least, the yellow lights are going to start flashing in front of these schools, people. For those of you who haven't been by NAP Early College, and it's getting ready to happen in a week or two, you're going to see these yellow lights, and we have a deputy here tonight, and I hope there's a deputy car sitting in front of every school, and I hope they enforce the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. Please slow down for our school buses and in front of our schools. We don't want to have an accident here at the beginning of school.
Ms. Craft?
Yes. I also want to welcome everyone back and hope you had a great summer and you're ready to get back in gear. And I was able to attend the convocation for JP NAP on Monday, and they honored the upcoming seniors, and that was nice. And I also agree that we need to slow down and be aware of the buses and ready to stop and save our children's lives. Thank you.
I want to say, first, thank you for all of the students that did come out to interview with us. We really wish we could have picked every one of you.
Absolutely.
It's probably one of the hardest decisions we make each year, is picking who gets to be on the board. They're all great, and we just want to keep them all with us. I also want to extend a big thank you to those who participated, like the teachers that were here for the math, those who participated in the summer reading camps over the summer. They were here for weeks, five days a week, or four days a week. My daughter participated in them, she had a great time, she learned a lot, she came up a lot of levels, and I have heard from other parents whose kids went out to these summer camps, whose kids have come a long way with that one-on-one time in those small groups that they got. And I just want to thank every one of them for giving up their summer to work with our kids. The results that Ms. Kinsel shared with us tonight were wonderful, and I'm glad our kids got the opportunity to do that and that our teachers could give us their times. I want to welcome any new teachers and new students that are coming back to Currituck County Schools with us this year. It's an exciting time, schools revving up, they've talked about the driving, please stop with our buses. If our buses have the lights going, please stop. I remember last year, there were at least two meetings that I came here where I was driving into my meeting and had people running bus stop, stopped buses, and I do not want to see one of our kids get hurt. Don't forget, we do have the cameras on our buses, so there will be, hopefully, tickets issued and those kinds of things, so be aware of that. Last but not least, I try to sit with the Currituck Educational Ministries Council as much as I can throughout the year. It's a great opportunity for our churches and our faith groups to get involved with our schools. The first meeting is coming up, August 11th at 9:00 a.m. at the Cooperative Extension Center. We invite any churches that want to get involved to please come out, it's a great group. I know they came out and did a lot of work for our schools throughout the year last year, and we look forward to that growing. So if you're interested, please get in touch with me or Virginia Arrington or any of us in the, in the administration will get you in the right place. Thank you.
And I would just like to echo the thoughts of the other board members about the upcoming school year and the safety of our students. I would also like to, or look forward to working with Jenna Akers and Tyler Little, the two new student board members, and I really look forward to seeing our newest CTE program, Public Safety and EMT, which will start at the beginning of this coming school year at Currituck High School. And before I ask for an adjournment for the meeting, I would just like to say that the board, after the adjournment of the meeting, will reconvene the closed session we started at three o'clock. So do I have a motion for adjournment?
Is that moved?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.